Everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Syracuse Planning Commission. With a quorum present, we will call this meeting to order. Shortly, we will begin our public hearings for this evening. However, ahead of that, we do have minutes from our first meeting of this month. Those have been circulated in advance to the commission members. And it would be appropriate at this time for a motion for action on those minutes of our May 5 meeting. Is there such a motion?
Oh, yeah, I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Our minutes are approved. And we will move into our public hearing schedule for this evening. Just by way of introduction, for those unfamiliar with our process, as each application is announced by a member of the staff, we ask that the applicant come forward to the podium in the center of the room, using the microphone, provide your name and address for the record, and then a brief summary of your application. Following questions from the commission members, we will then invite members of the public who wish to speak in favor of the application to do so. And similarly, we will invite members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to the application to do that. Where comments are offered in opposition, the applicant will be encouraged to return to address comments made in opposition. And we ask that all speakers for or against keep their minutes to a concise three minutes so we can accommodate as many speakers as possible. With that, I think we are ready for our first application for this evening.
So, the first agenda items on the agenda is the resubdivision application, R-25-19. It's a resubdivision application to combine 134 and 140 Lafayette Road Rear into one lot. The owner and applicant is Paula and James Carlos Cirenos. I'm sorry about the names. It's in the R4 Zone District.
James Carlos Cirenos, 134 and 1/2 Lafayette Road, Syracuse, New York. I want to do this, well, first of all, 20 years ago, I went through this. The property's been deeded together for 20 years and had a survey done at the same time. I hired an attorney to do everything, and we thought it was done. We bought a shed, put it on the property, and they said, "You can't put a shed on a vacant lot." And I said, "Well, it's not. It's one property." And so, this, I have to go through this to, you know, to make it right. I guess that's it.
Okay, that's simple, huh?
It's that simple.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see if there are any questions from the commission members. Are there any questions for the applicant?
Everything seems in order. It'd be nice to know what went wrong in 1995, but I doubt that we're going to be able to do that.
The attorney's not around anymore.
Right. I am curious about the front property, though, at that address. What's the disposition of that property? The 134 front? Because we have the one-
Yeah, I own that, too. And I own 128, and I own 124.
Okay. Yeah, okay, right.
That's the subject of tonight's-
Right, 140 is our subject, right? So, the 134, you own that one as well?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Is that for me?
Good. I think we're good. Thank you. Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come to the podium. We have no speakers for or against, so we'll close public comment on this application, and we will turn to our seeker review.
Has everyone had a chance to review the EAF Part 1, prepared by the applicant and contained in your packet?
Yes.
Has everyone had a chance to review the EAF Part 2, prepared by staff and contained in your packet?
Yes.
Does anyone believe that the proposed action will have a moderate to large impact under seeker?
No.
Having determined there will be no moderate to large impacts, I recommend that the commission make a negative declaration and prepare the Part 3 EAF accordingly.
Thank you. Is there such a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to issue a negative seeker declaration.
Thank you. Thank you. Discussion on this seeker motion before us. There's no discussion. All in favor of the seeker motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? If seeker motion is approved, we can now proceed to the resubdivision itself. This is R-25-19. Is there a motion for action on this?
I make a motion to approve application R-25-19 with two conditions beyond the general conditions. One condition is the filing of the resubdivision approval with the county clerk's office within 62 days. And the second condition is issuing of the permit for demolition or for the accessory building to make it appropriate.
Shed, okay. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of this motion for R-25-19, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Resubdivision for R-25-19 is approved. Thank you. Project completed after 20 years. And we move on to our next application.
The next items on the agenda is a resubdivision application also. It's R-25-20. It's a application to combine three lots at 1006, 1012, and 1016 Burnett Avenue into one new lot. Katelyn Wright, Greater Syracuse Property Development Corporation is the owner of 1006 Burnett Avenue, and applicant. Mike Corsi, 1012-1016 Burnett Avenue LLC is the owner of the 1012 and 1016 Burnett Avenue. It's in the MX3 Zone District.
Thank you. Good evening.
I'm Terry Luckett with Syracuse Land Bank, 1941 South Salina Street. 1006 Burnett Ave has been in our inventory since 2018, and we just demolished a single-family house there just this past April. 1012 and 1016 is owned by Mike Corsi. His plumbing business is there. He would like to purchase the lot and just keep it green space and try to take care of it so that the street looks good. In the short term and in the long term, he might expand his parking for the plumbing business. The lot is buildable. It's in MX3. It's 43 by 125, but it's unlikely that any new construction will happen there on a very busy commercial corridor backing up to 690. It's, you know, relatively small for single-family construction or even multifamily construction. Resub won't alter the character. There's other lots that are 200 feet wide just across the street.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Could you explain again, the demolition that occurred there? Was it on 106 or 1006, or which property was it?
1006, Land Bank House.
Okay, right.
Further questions for the applicant? Thank you, Terry. Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come forward. Provide your name, address, and comments. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. We don't appear to have any additional speakers on this application, so we will close public comment and turn our attention to our seeker review.
Has everyone had a chance to review the EAF Part 1, contained in your packet?
Yes.
Has everyone had a chance to review the EAF Part 2, contained in your packet?
Yes.
Does anyone believe the proposed action will have a moderate to large impact under seeker?
No.
No.
Having determined there will be no moderate to large impacts, I recommend that the commission make a negative declaration and prepare the Part 3 EAF accordingly.
Thank you. Is there such a seeker motion?
Sure, I make a motion to issue a negative seeker declaration.
Thank you both. Discussion on this seeker motion? If there's no need for discussion, then all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? The seeker motion is approved, and we may now consider the resubdivision itself, R-25-20.
Before forming a motion on this, I just have a clarifying question. I want to make sure, because in our staff recommendations, we have two conditions suggested. One is the customary filing of the resubdivision with the county clerk. But the second was a comment about the permit for demolition of 1006 Burnett Avenue. But it's my understanding, I asked the question, that's taken care of? It's already been taken down? Okay, right. So, I make a motion to approve R-25-20 with one condition beyond general conditions, that being the customary filing of the resub with the county clerk's office within 62 days of approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on this motion? And if there's no discussion, all in favor of this motion for R-25-20, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? This resubdivision is also approved. We move to yet another resubdivision this evening.
The next application on the agenda is R-25-21. It's a resubdivision to combine the lot at 105 and 106 Hatch Street into one lot. The 105 Hatch Street is owned by Katelyn Wright, Greater Syracuse Property Development Corporation, and the 107 Hatch Street is owned by Greg Proudy. The two of the lots are both in the R3 Zone District.
Thank you.
Terry Luckett, Syracuse Land Bank, 1941 South Salina Street. 105 Hatch, this one was demolished back in 2020. Greg Proudy is a recent purchaser of the adjacent house. He would like to fence the property in for additional yard space. He already has a shared driveway with the property next door at 111, so he doesn't need a driveway. He just wants additional lot space at this time. The lot's not going to change the character of the neighborhood. It'll create a lot measuring 68 feet by 165, and that's consistent with other sites in the area. 112 and 114 has 66, 126 has 60, 133 has 70. There's lots of examples of wider houses. I'm assuming there's been other demolitions on that street. And that's it.
Thank you. Are there questions for the applicant for this resubdivision?
Good.
Okay, thank you. Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come to the podium. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. We have no additional speakers, so we will close, excuse me, we will close public comment for this application and consider our seeker review next.
Have all the commissioners had a chance to review the EAF Part 1, prepared by the applicant and contained in your packet?
Yes.
Has everyone had a chance to review the EAF Part 2, prepared by staff and contained in your packet?
Yes.
Does anyone believe the proposed action will have a moderate to large impact under seeker?
No.
Having determined there will be no moderate to large impacts, I recommend that the commission make a negative declaration and prepare the Part 3 EAF accordingly.
Thank you. Is there such a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to issue a negative declaration, a negative seeker declaration.
Okay.
Thank you both. Discussion on this motion? There's no discussion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Resubdivision for R-25-21 is approved. Thank you. We move to our next application.
Just did the seeker.
Sorry.
Did we do the resub? Just did seeker.
Seeker and resub, right?
Okay, we'll do the resub.
We didn't vote on resub. We just did the seeker.
I guess we just liked the seeker.
In that case, now that our seeker review is completed, my apologies, we will turn our attention to the resubdivision for R-25-21. And is there a motion for action for this resubdivision application?
Sure, I make a motion to approve R-25-21 as presented with two conditions beyond a general condition. One is the customary condition for filing the resubdivision map with the county clerk office within 62 days. And the second condition is with respect to the necessity for a permit if the fence is to be installed on the adjacent property.
Second.
Thank you both. Discussion. After all that, we all had a little discussion here. But if there's no discussion, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Now the resubdivision. She's left already for R-25-21. Is approved. And we move to another item on our agenda this evening.
The following items on the agenda is Misper-25-44. This is a minor site plan review application that was referred by the zoning administrator to the City Planning Commission. This project is located at 294 Jefferson Street West to Walton Street. The property owner and applicant is Edward Gottlieb, Pacific Properties Inc., INC. This property is located in MX5 Zone District.
Thank you. If the applicant is here, please come forward. Provide your name and address and the summary of the application, please.
Yes, I'm Joe Gilvagno. I am the registered agent for Ed Gottlieb at 294 West Jefferson to Walton.
Sorry, could you speak into the microphone?
First time.
Right.
So, yes, I'm Joe Gilvagno. I'm the agent for Edward Gottlieb at 294 West Jefferson Street to Walton. Here for a change of use from a restaurant to a bar.
Any other details or information that would be appropriate to share for this application?
None that I can think of.
Okay. Are there any questions from the commission members for the applicant?
Do you want to go first? Okay. So, this is a minor site plan review, which customarily does not come before the planning commission?
It's not minor. When it gets kicked up to you, it's a major.
So, it's automatically a major? Because it started out as a minor, I'm sorry, in our documentation, it's listed as a major. So, the reason why it got kicked up is because we have a very long history of violations with this particular property. And therefore, we need to take care to make sure that, since there is a provisional certificate of use in place, we need to make sure that if this business is to continue operating in this location, that it's operating safely, legally, within the environmental context. And so, we have a long history of complaints with respect to this property, and that's why it's here before us right now. So, in dealing with those kinds of situations, what we, as a planning commission, try to do, because it's not our business to try and deny people the opportunity to operate a business, we just want to make sure the business can operate safely, legally, and within the appropriate context within the neighborhood. And so, we have to address these issues. So, that's why this particular application is before us, kicked up from a minor site plan review to a major site plan review. And our orientation in trying to deal with these kinds of situations is to use various tools that we have at our disposal. In this particular case, there's a memorandum of understanding that was formed between the city and the proprietor of the business, and also, I would emphasize, the owner of the property as well. Because with a special use permit, that runs with the land, not just the proprietor, the business specifically. So, we have to address that issue with respect to the landlord as well. And so, we're in a situation where we have to establish those conditions to make sure that this property operates, this business operates within the boundaries of the code of law and the expectations for the neighborhood. So, in this case, we have recommendation for nine conditions that have to be met in order for this business to continue operating. I think that, given the circumstances, it's important to read those specific conditions so that they're absolutely clear and understood. Because, again, it's important to understand that in cases like this, the planning commission is only making a recommendation to the common council. And so, in order to make that recommendation, we need to make sure that the application is addressing all the issues that need to be addressed. So, I would like to go through those nine special conditions in this particular case because it's important. The first special condition would be that the business must obtain compliance with the memorandum of understanding signed on 3/28/25. And then, the next five conditions are specifically related to that memorandum of understanding. The second condition is a business shall control noise levels to a reasonable degree so as not to violate the city's local noise ordinance located in Chapter 40, Section 40-16 of the revised general ordinance for the City of Syracuse. The third item is that the business does not have an entertainment license and may not have live entertainment. No live entertainment is permitted without an entertainment license, including but not limited to a dance floor, live music, DJs, dancers, and karaoke. The fourth stipulation is a business may not use amplified speakers to project music outside and will control any speaker volume inside so as not to violate the city's local noise ordinance located at Chapter 40, Section 40-16 of the revised general ordinance. Five is a business shall not sell alcohol past the legally permitted hour of 2:00 a.m. and shall close operation by 2:30 a.m. The business shall make sure no patrons will be permitted to enter the premises outside of operating hours, and all patrons must vacate the premises within 30 minutes of closing time. Six, designated security staff shall monitor the exterior premises during operating hours after 10:00 p.m. and for 30 minutes after closing time to prevent loitering and disturbances. Seven, the business must strictly adhere to operational hours which determine appropriate and approved by the City Planning Commission. And the hours that we have in our application are 4:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. for Monday through Wednesday, Thursday through Saturday at 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., and on Sunday from 12:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Item eight is the owner applicant shall work with the Syracuse Police Department to conduct a crime prevention through environmental design review of the subject tenant space and implement all of the recommendations in the SEP head. And then, item nine is any violations of the conditions above will result in revocation of the land use approval. So, those are our recommended conditions if this project is approved.
Additional comments, or do you want to react to that?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, can I ask a question?
Yeah, please.
Are you the property manager?
I am.
You are? Okay. Of the whole property?
Yeah, of the person.
Not just the-
Yeah, not just the bar. I do have the tenant with me.
Okay, great. So, you're representing Ed Gottlieb?
Yes.
Okay. I think that one of the things that everybody wants to make clear here is that the owner of a property, as well as the tenant of a property, has an equal responsibility to adhere to all of the rules and regulations ordinances that the municipality presents to the operation. So, it's not just a tenant obligation, it's as well an owner-operator obligation. I just want to be sure that everybody's hearing that.
Understood.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, additional comments? Questions for the applicant? Okay, additional comments, questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll pause now and ask if there are any individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application. If so, please come forward, provide your name, address, and your comments.
My name is Randall Hahn, I am the minority owner at Tap House on Walton for the conditional of the space. I'm located at 120 East Washington is where my office is, here in downtown Syracuse. I'd like to actually talk about some of these things, as I think the level of proof in some of these accusations, as I call them, is very minimal. I've had calls since August to the State Liquor Authority. We were cleared back in October, I do have that here stated. I do see that the page that you guys provided of all the property checks between September 28th and March 8th, that is provided in your zoning, shows on the far, when you see final action, it says 41 and 06. That is clearing, making sure that nothing is going on at the property in appropriate hours, when those 44 calls at the bottom of the violation say that they were stated. There was never any proof of any after-hours, we've been able to debunk that. I think it's a big following from the people upstairs, I understand that the Blue Tusk was a huge thing in downtown Syracuse. We are a bar below residential. The ticket that was issued was thrown out in court for the noise ordinance, that was thrown out. I have cameras inside the facility that actually record the audio. I also submitted to Amir Gathers, the city council requested all of the videos showing for six weekends, that we were out the door and out of the building by 2:30 a.m. I think a lot of this, and we're having this now, is due to the escalation of the exaggeration of stories. And I understand that the tenants are upset, I understand that the former owner of the Blue Tusk was a resident up there. We do, my business partner has started to buy properties up there, so I'm well aware of all the emails. I saw the one go out on Friday, where they encouraged people to come stand against us, not to be open or be able to have live entertainment. We've lost employees on Friday and Saturday because we're not allowed to have a DJ, live entertainment, music, bands. We've had your own Joe Driscoll down there playing. So we do a variety of things. As you see in your emails, they're starting to come through to Zitong here, a level of support from my peers in the area. The owner of Margarita's is rowed, the owner of Touche and Nobody's. Tom and Ellie from next door is sending an email right now from his office. So we support everyone in the area, we provide a lot of jobs, and we're just a bar just like everybody else. We've had no complaints except the Saturday from 10 to 2 a.m. The neighbors upstairs will just call and make noise complaints. I don't think that's fair, as they've all been cleared, as you see here in the paper that you provided. And I've been working with the police, we got together in November. I did, however, in the summertime, the guys provided a bass speaker, that was removed back in November. Let me just say this, the last six weeks or eight weeks since this all occurred and we signed that paper under distress because you guys would not let us operate if we didn't sign it, that we've ran the same type of music just off of an iPad, and there hasn't been one police call for a noise ordinance during this time, and I have video of this. So I just want to be clear that nothing's changed, and how I understand that there's a level of support for the place, and there's a lot of people that are like, hey, I'm not going to go down there because it's not the Blue Tusk. I understand that, and I respect everybody's point of view. I just don't think it's fair that some of these restrictions are in place to hinder us from being able to operate normally like everybody else. As long as we adhere to having all of the proper permits and everything else that's required of us.
So what specifically are you objecting to, if anything?
So when it says the businesses cannot have an entertainment license, we do want to be able, we don't use amplified speakers. I can't see all of that.
It doesn't, okay, let me stop you there.
It doesn't say can't, it says does not have.
It says that you don't have one currently. And I believe the condition is intended to make sure that if you intend to have entertainment, you apply for the license.
Yes, and we will do that, I just wanted to clarify that, because when I talked to Eric, I was a little confused today.
Okay, it doesn't say you can't get one, it just says you have to get one if you want to do it.
Right, right. We've never operated outside of our business hours. I just want to make that very clear.
Okay.
What was the last part?
We've never operated outside of our business hours.
Good.
I even have, you even have an email from an SPD officer that works the detail downtown, he sent an email in today of support for us.
Right.
We did receive that.
Yep.
So there are noise ordinances in the city for everybody?
I know that. But what I'm saying is, we're not exceeding the normal noise ordinance of what a bar would be.
That's the goal.
Yep. But the same speakers that I was using prior, between November, when that bass speaker was removed, between prior and March, those same speakers have been used the last eight weeks, and there's not been one call. And just like the...
What do you attribute that to?
To be honest with you, I don't know, because it's the same music, there's just no, there's not somebody standing there with a guitar or a DJ packet, you know? It's just, that's the difference. But that's what draws, so we do, as you see, there's an email there from the president of Upstate Medical. We do two events a month that fundraise for their program at Upstate. They are a black-owned kind of business-type thing, they do an Afro Q's Beats. They come in twice a month, and I allow them to charge at the door, they take that money and they put it towards Upstate Medical program. And he details that in his email to you guys. They do provide a DJ on their own, they did use a bass speaker, which I could see when I met with the city and the neighbors upstairs where that could be a problem. So we debunked all that. But still, after that, I see that there was still 44 calls of noise complaints put in. But even if you see on some of them, even in the police ledger, they were all cleared on the noise complaints, meaning that there wasn't, there was no noise ordinance.
Well, I guess, so just to clarify, I mean, your objection is to the issue of being able to have live entertainment, and all the other stipulations, if everything is happening the way it's supposed to happen, there shouldn't be any problems moving forward. Unfortunately, we're not in a position where we can determine which complaints in the past have been valid and which complaints have not been valid. We can only address what we have before us. So moving forward, if there are no more complaints, it's not a problem. So the issue is the entertainment, and if you want to have entertainment, then you just have to apply for an entertainment license.
Yes, that's fine, maybe I misunderstood that.
Just to make sure, well, maybe I didn't read it correctly. The point is, you don't have a license right now, so there can be no live entertainment now. If you want to have live entertainment, you have to apply for a live entertainment license.
Yes, sir. And we do have security, the actual director of our security is the director of the mall's security. He should be here any minute now, he's outside of the mall. But I'm sure he'll speak, and again, like I said, we hire him, so he handles all of our security.
Friday and Saturday?
Yes, ma'am, and actually, one of his security guards is here as well, so.
Are there questions for the applicant? Okay, we're good for now, thank you. Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come to the podium, provide your name, address, and comments.
Hello, hello, my name is Daniel Angersall, I am one of the security guards at Tap House on Walton. I just wanted to take time out to say, we've made sure that Tap House is a fun and safe environment for everybody, that includes everybody. And in this time, I understand that some people have issues with alleged noise from downstairs. Respect and understand people's boundaries and what they'd like, same time. In the last couple of weeks, we haven't had any issues as far as noise, because we don't have any live entertainment. As he said earlier, we play music off of a iPhone or iPad so that people enjoy themselves while they're having their drinks. Any events that we've ever had, as of recent especially, are to raise money for Upstate. Any issues that we have had aren't our issues. Anything outside of the walls of Tap House is outside of our jurisdiction. And we have great relationships with SPD to take care of and stop any issues from starting before they even start. So I just wanted to take time out to say, we followed and complied with any rules or regulations that have been put in place, and will continue to do so going forward.
Thank you. Are there other individuals who wish to speak in favor of the application? Please come to the podium, provide your name, address, and your comments.
Hello, good evening. My name is Chantel Powell, I am the co-owner of East Coast Bandits. We are a vinyl shop downtown, we're also an event planning business. I have worked closely with the venue to host brunches, baby showers, various community-centered events such as Syracuse's CBT Alumni Weekend. I can attest to their commitment to creating an atmosphere that supports small businesses and enhances the cultural atmosphere of downtown Syracuse. Tap House has partnered with us and many other local creators and organizations that reflect positively in our community. Allowing them what they need would allow them to continue what is already a space for music and creativity, which is important. And it also opens up more opportunities for responsible nightlife and economic growth in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there other individuals who wish to speak in favor of the application? Please come forward, provide your name and address for the record and your comments.
How's it going? My name is Nikim Evans, I actually run security for Tap House under Evans Security Services. One of my guys actually just spoke.
A moment ago, yes.
So I think that it should be approved. I've been working for Tap House for probably maybe two years, a little bit more. I've actually known the owner as a personal friend for probably about seven years. I've been doing security for bars downtown. In my personal opinion, I would have to say his bar has been the safest I've ever worked at. I've worked at, like I said, other bars, ranging from CSP to Margaritas, different things like that. And my team put on the most phenomenal staffing they can when it comes to safety, protocols, different things like that. There has never been an issue with inside the bar. Typically, when things, you know, go outside that bar, we handle it the best way we can, even with the help of Syracuse Police, which also, they do a phenomenal job with assisting me. But I will say from a personal standpoint, we have never had any issue inside. Ever since November, the loud music hasn't been an issue, which is also good. I know sometimes, you know, people complain about that, and, you know, living downtown, and I understand. But there has never been any issues, even from music's standpoint. So I, like I said, in my opinion, I would like it to be granted. I've been doing work there for over two years at least, and I'd like to continue that. The owner's been exceptional, he's done great things for this community, for this city. And to see it to go opposite, I would be kind of upset, a little disappointed. But like I said, my name is Nikim from Evans Security Services, I do the security for Randy, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there other individuals who wish to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come forward. So next, I will ask, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? If so, please come to the podium, provide your name, address, and your comments.
Hi, my name is Reagan Cuddy, I am a resident and owner in the Center Armory condominiums right above this establishment. And I have been one of the people who has been directly affected historically by some of these noise and vibration issues. I will, I would like to acknowledge that, yes, we did have discussions in November of this past year, and that the reduction in use of the DJ speakers did reduce the vibrational noise, so appreciated that change. I think my concern, and why I wanted to make sure I was here tonight, is just that this change, and I appreciate there are the conditions currently there, feels as though the change from land use of a bar, restaurant to bar, with the accessory use for entertainment, opens the door for going back to live entertainment, which is where we previously experienced these issues. When I moved back to Syracuse five years ago and bought downtown, it's because I care about and I want to invest in the city. And I would love to see these establishments succeed, and so I'm not here to try and squash this and squash progress. I just want to make sure that as residents, our investment in our homes are still places that we can live and work and do all of those things, and that it can be done in a way that we can coexist. Some things that came to mind for me, in addition to some of the staff recommendations, were, you know, if this live music and live entertainment had not happened before, are there things that have been done in terms of either acoustical studies, or soundproofing, or other measures that could be taken? Because it feels like there could be other options to explore. And at the end of the day, I think it's, I don't want it to be an us against them. I think we all have a vested interest in this area being inhabited by responsible and collaborative owners and tenants. And that's, I think, why I'm here today, to just say that, as it was currently submitted, I felt like I needed to say something in opposition, but it's not in opposition to the change happening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the application? If so, please come to the podium, provide your name and address, and then your comments.
Hi, Phil Reynolds, I'm also a resident in Center Armory. I want to echo a lot of what Reagan said, in just saying that, like, this is by no means a complaint about progress and activity downtown. Living downtown for the last few years has been a joy. I love being down there, I work downtown, I live downtown, I like to spend my money and be an active participant in downtown. It's really hard to do so, though, when you can't get sleep on the weekends because your house is shaking. And I think that that's just one of the things that I, it has tapered, certainly, but I think it's one of those things where the structure just maybe isn't built for that kind of activity. And it's hard to acknowledge that there are still 38 units upstairs who care and want to be downtown, and they want to support. It's just that it's hard when, you know, you have a family and you're up all night on Friday, Saturday, Thursday sometimes, because it's just not, it's literally shaking your home, I think that's the hardest part. The noise is something that's very common in downtown, you're used to it. The people, the music outside, it's very obvious, and you kind of expect that. It's just when it's literally below you, that is really difficult to get past. And I think sort of, I have a similar concern of, like, if these things aren't held to, or if there isn't that acknowledgement, that that kind of level of bass and that shaking will continue, and that's just, it's just incredibly disruptive to all of us upstairs.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a question? Have you noticed an improvement?
I have, we've noticed an improvement specifically in the last eight weeks.
Okay.
I think that the core maybe of what the issue is, is the live music, or the kind of it. It's hard to tell, but I think that, like, when the iPad music that they're talking about, that's not bothersome. A touch tunes is not bothersome, I think it is just dependent on the sound.
Speakers and the system.
Yeah, and it's hard to tell, and it's certainly not constant, right? You know, to their credit, like, they've made some changes, and that's really helpful. But I think that it just is dependent on what's playing and who's in there and how late.
Has there been adherence to the hours?
To close it too? As far as we know, yes, the quiet, it gets really quiet after that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Are there other individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the application? If so, please come to the podium, provide your name and address for the record, and then share your comments with us.
Good evening, my name is PJ Nolan, I am the owner of the Limerick Pub located at 134 Walton Street. I've had the privilege of running that business for about 20 years, and we have been in business for 30. I felt compelled to speak today because I am very committed to Armory Square, I also happen to live above Margarita's. And the outcome, the outcomes for Walton and Armory affect more than just the people upstairs, the people across the street like myself. It affects the surrounding neighborhood in its entirety, and that's what I want to speak to. Since the last maybe five years, Armory has been recovering from a reputation that is not a safe place to go. There have been some violence, there have been stabbings, there have been, people have been killed. This has been an ongoing process, where I have been to probably 20 different meetings with the Armory Square Association, and we... with the Armory Square Association, and we talk about security at every single one. So for me, I have live music twice a week. I understand the permitting, I understand the timing of that, I understand it is good for business. I also want to see businesses around me succeed. I, I don't think that anyone who's here is coming and doing it out of spite or out of dislike for successful businesses. I do worry about my staff. I worry about them walking to their car at night when proper security measures are not being taken. We are very grateful for the police in, at the intersection of Walton. They do a wonderful job of making sure that we are safe while they are there. We understand that there has been a lot of conversation about when they are and when they are not. But that being aside, that is my number one issue, that is my number one concern. I appreciate these conditions being added as I hadn't seen them before. Again, it's just about, you know, walking three blocks to your car at 2:30 in the morning when you're closing up and making sure that it's not just inside your space that you're taking care of, but it's the surrounding area as well, because we all walk those sidewalks and we all live in this neighborhood. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there other individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the application? If so, please come to the podium, provide your name, address, and your comments. I don't see anyone additionally stepping up to speak on this application, so we will close public comment, but as noted earlier at the outset of the meeting where comments are offered in opposition, the applicant has an opportunity to address comments made in opposition. So if you wish to do so, now would be the time to do that. It's optional.
I just want to touch on the noise level, the noise complaints that we have been getting. It's very consistent with Armory Square. I manage a significant amount of properties in Armory Square, and every weekend, there is noise complaints. There's a lot of movement on the streets outside of these bars, just coming from the homeowners' association upstairs. I have multiple complaints on tenants here and there, one being The Crooked Cattle, one being LM Social. I think it's part of being in Armory Square. Our buildings are built pretty well. We have acoustical drop ceiling, we have insulation above them. We do everything in our power to keep the noise and vibration from going upstairs. And that's really all I have. We're trying our best here. So, thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll close, we already did close public comment on this, but we will now turn our attention to our seeker review.
Has everyone had a chance to review the EAF Part 1 prepared by the applicant and contained in your packet?
Yes.
Has everyone reviewed the EAF Part 2 contained in your packet?
Yes.
Yes.
Does anyone believe the proposed action will have a moderate to large impact under seeker?
No.
No.
Having determined there will be no moderate to large impacts, I recommend that the commission make a negative declaration and prepare the Part 3 EAF accordingly.
Thank you. Is there such a motion?
Sure, make a motion to issue a negative seeker declaration.
Discussion on the seeker motion before us. There's no discussion, then all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? The seeker motion carries, and we turn our attention to the major site plan review, MISPR 2544.
So a question, I guess before we form a motion, I just want to make sure, does this, does this continue as MISPR-25-44, or should this be renumbered as a major site plan review? Just wanted to clarify that, because we had some discussion, and to clarify for the audience that as a major site plan review, the planning commission is the final decision on the application. So is that correct, or do we need to change the?
We wouldn't change it, just for our own record-keeping.
Okay.
But it'll be treated as a major. Yeah.
Great, okay, thank you.
I also have one quick question on the security piece. Part of the conditions or one of the condition discussions is your security, your inside security, partaking in outside observing of security at, from 2:00 to 2:30. Is that something that you see possible?
Yeah, we can do that. The call from November, you were basically told, uh, conflict, that we were told to hang around the outside of the walls. It's kind of complicated.
I understand that, right. Right.
Do you have no problem? Like I said, you can see our guy.
Right.
Here in the street corner. The biggest issue, and I just want to say this once for everybody, is there is no bar in that space. The issue is when we let out, we're letting out 150 people into the street that's not traffic. What happens is you take people from Margaritas, from Benjamin, your Oxlade onto the street to see their buddies, and guess what? Where does everybody go? Pizza shop. I think a lot of fights and extra activities happen there. They don't exactly run towards the cops and police. They end up running into the alleyway. These guys don't have a problem staying until 3:00 AM, until even the pizza shop closes up, just to kind of keep our alleyway properly safe, because there is four bars. You know, they're all 6'5", they're all building. But it's just, you know, we took the outdoor speaker, to her point, we did remove the outdoor speaker, that is no longer, you won't play any outdoor music. Kind of prevent that. It wasn't on the street. And as far as the structure, as Joe said, I know that there's been issues with other people. You know, we have emails from people complaining about it on social, The Crooked Cattle now about do live music outside of the street. What is that going to be like? And I think we're all intrigued to see what's going to happen there. But we have no problem with the live music. Even up till 3:00 AM.
That'd be great. I think to the woman from Limerick's point, you know, if everybody's doing the same thing in the neighborhood, it's only going to help protect the neighborhood.
And these guys walk our market until 2:45 after we close. These guys walk into the street.
Great. Okay. I have one more question, Randall. Have you applied for an entertainment permit?
I have. Everything has been on hold.
Until this.
Until this.
Correct.
Everything was applied for back last October, until we were informed and told we were in a question, there was going to be this like, it's kind of old, hey, operators, normal, it's on, you can blow. And obviously the stabbing occurred outside of Wall Street, which, there wasn't a fight inside of our bar. For that video footage, nothing happened, it's kind of this, from somewhere between our bar and the pizza shop. You know, that's what happened, but that's why we're not able to move stuff.
Okay, thank you.
As soon as this is concluded, I think permitting is only...
Yep. Thank you. Okay.
There's a lot of lines in play here.
It's a lot of stuff in one.
Yeah.
I feel a lot of 6'5". I know the zone.
That's good. Okay, sorry.
So I guess we're set for motion? I mean, I just want to say, I appreciate the comments both for and against the project, because hopefully this is how we sort out these things and come up with an outcome that's suitable for everybody. And it seemed like things are moving in the right direction, so the only, only issue now is if you get the entertainment license and can operate according to the guidelines, then everything will be hunky-dory moving forward. Okay.
Yeah, I have a bar in Syracuse, 7. I have one around the corner. I have issues with all these. I think those are some of the most people that watch.
Is there then a motion?
So I, I make a motion to approve MISPR-24-44 with the nine conditions that were read into the record earlier in the meeting.
And those conditions include the SEPTED...
Yes, they do.
...recommendation or study? Okay.
As well as the general conditions.
As well as the general conditions, correct.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion now on this motion before us with the conditions enumerated earlier. If not, then all in favor of the motion as proposed, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? The major site plan review is approved with the conditions noted. Thanks to everyone who spoke on this application. We move to our next project.
Thank you for the good work.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the Syracuse University Hotel Projects. It includes two companion application. One is the re-subdivision application, R-25-22. Another one is the project plan review, Z-2898. It's located at the 600 602 602.5, 604 and 606 University Avenue. The Syracuse University is the owner, and Jennifer C. Bybee is the applicant. It's, all the districts are in, all the properties are in the PID Zone District.
Evening. My name is Joe Alfieri, Executive Director of Campus Planning, Design and Construction at Syracuse University. Jennifer could not be here tonight. We're here tonight to present a new hotel to be constructed. It's proposed on the university campus within the main campus PID Sub District 12. The site is on the west side of University Ave, north of Adam Street and south of Harrison Street. The university-owned and operated University Ave Garage is directly across University Avenue to the east. The new hotel will fulfill a vital need for both the university community and the larger Syracuse community as well. The hotel is designed to comply with all zoning requirements. The university has applied for both project plan review and a re-subdivision applications. Please note, the university is not seeking approval of zoning applications at tonight's hearing, rather requesting that the planning commission equal, issue a seeker negative declaration tonight. As your packets show, we have submitted extensive analysis of potential environmental impacts, included third-party consultant analysis, and have proposed measures were appropriate to ensure there are no resulting significant adverse environmental impacts. Additionally, despite the late-breaking news article, Syracuse, the university, Syracuse University has obtained capacity to serve letters from City Water, Onondaga County ACWAP, and National Grid, like we would do with all of our normal projects, the preceding three you've seen recently. So thank you for having us on the agenda for tonight. With us tonight are Brian Murch, Associate Architect and Principal at DLR Group Architects, Sarah Sturts, Associate Principal at King &amp; King Architects, and Greg Fuchet, Partner from Whitman, Osterman-Hanna, outside counsel for the project. I'll now turn over the presentation to Brian Murch to present the design of the proposed hotel. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Good afternoon, or good evening, everybody. My name is Brian Murch. I represent DLR Group. We're a national architecture firm, and I'm one of the design architects working on the hotel. I've got a handful of slides to share tonight, just to cover a couple bases for where we're at with things. First, a little context. Those five parcels being combined, currently parking lots in their existence, and the thought here is to convert that into our new hotel. Next slide, maybe a little more technical data, just showing the site boundaries, setbacks, as well as some of the utilities. Ooh, this is a jigsaw puzzle. Maybe a little too high-res for, yeah, maybe a little refresh. Essentially, we tried to create a context map for the hotel, just to show it in relation not only to the neighborhood, but also its relationship back to the campus. We also indicated some of those roof heights, just trying to capture the scope and scale of the new hotel in, in relation to the buildings around us. Oh, boy.
Yeah, we have it.
This is going to make my job harder.
We have it.
Let's see, where, okay, so then, the site plan? Oh, here we go. Okay, cool. Context map. So you can see the orange dot, that represents the hotel, again, just in its conformance and just the bigger composition of the neighborhood around us. The next slide, I think, really highlights where we're at with the design currently in site plan. The middle section, probably the most significant part, is the hotel tower. Programmatically, we have about 200 guest rooms in total. To go with that, we have an extension of that lobby space, which is the podium building or what we call our event space. We've got about a 4,200 square foot ballroom in pre-function. And then lastly, at the bottom of that sheet, there is a parking garage, an elevated parking structure. A couple other points to make on this slide is the access points. So just thinking about guest arrival and some of those peak times, the black arrow there represents kind of that entry courtyard. We've created an auto court for cars to be able to access from university and allow ingress and egress to our, to our lobby from there. There's an access point along university, along the sidewalk, just to invite people in from that point. And then lastly, the other point of contention here would be our three-bay truck berth in the back of the building. You can see it there on the left, in between the Skylar Commons Building and the new hotel. It would be accessed off of Harrison, obviously. The last slide we have to share just tries to capture the scope and scale of the elevations. It's going through a lot of detail currently, but more importantly, I think the architectural inspiration was based on, you know, the campus buildings, what we're trying to do to marry that material palette, as well as just thinking about our context and some of the buildings around us and how we merge that all together as a composition. Lots of glazing in glass, as you can imagine, the views from the upper guest rooms, as well as at the street frontage along university and Harrison, our frontages. Just thinking about how that activity of the lobby space spills out onto the sidewalk and really creates an inviting environment for guests and students and everybody in Syracuse That concludes the design slides.
Is, is that, completes your presentation, there's additional speaker, I don't want to interrupt anyone with our questions.
I'll turn it back over to you.
But if you're finished, we'll open it up, the questions from the commission members
So there's a grade on University Avenue that goes uphill from Genesee. This is being proposed, called 13 stories. Is it 13 stories at all grade?
Ooh, math.
Or are we?
So we, we use the zoning guidelines that talked about average grade plane. So you take the long elevation, divide it in half, hit that spot elevation, whatever that grade is there, and then that's where you measure everything from. In terms of stories, I would say it's fairly accurate. I know the lobby level, with it being the same elevation across, it was going to provide challenges at the Harrison intersection, just with people being up a little higher versus maybe a little lower. So I think the thought would be is that we step the floor inside so that it follows that grade change down university. So the story levels would be equal. It would just be that, that lowest level along university that would be stepped.
That will go down, up and down.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Joe, can, or maybe this is better for Joe, can you identify, what's the nearest 13-story
I think the Sheridan was 10, if I remember right.
Anything on the hills, quite 13.
Maybe it's upstairs.
Yeah. It'd be up.
Hotel that just closed.
Right.
The Oster. So that, oh, that was the biggest one. Right. So that's 12.
Higher.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Which, again, is because of grade, gonna present as a much higher?
Yeah. I can also add one point to that. So I know based on, there is a historic resource assessment report prepared by the King &amp; King Architect. I noticed that you designed the parking garage, like you have the parking garage and the restaurant sections as a stepping-down designs to accommodate, to be like, make it more consistent with the hotel Skyler in the back. And also, that's why, probably that's the reason why you have that, to preserve the view plan for this hotel in the back, the historic, or eligible buildings in the back. And also, that, yeah, and also that's why maybe you have like 13-story hotel in the middle.
Good for him.
Thank you.
So tonight, we're just doing the seeker review. So I'm just wondering, is there a reason why we're just doing seeker review tonight? I'm guessing you still have details that you're trying to work out before you do the full plan review?
I think, seriously, we are still working on some of the finer points in terms of what it's gonna be in the department. We don't have complete department comments back yet.
Right.
We still have to develop a new, even project launch to be able to. We had enough information to look at the environmental issues.
Okay.
And allowing those to be again looked at.
Fine, just wanted to clarify that. And I know, given the comment by the Onondaga County Planning Board and the unfortunate article in Post Standard today about that, you have addressed all the issues. And it does go through department review. So that, just for people in the audience and who may be watching online, that the process does include all of the departments weighing on, which is essentially what the county planning department said should happen. So that does, in fact, happen, and is happening with this process.
I don't want to take over any control. We submitted and reviewed with each department, the City Water Department, County Water Environmental Protection, what they wanted to see in terms of what we put into this project. And that was all submitted at department review.
Thank you.
Yeah, and also I can add on that. So this project will have a pre-development meeting on this Thursday with all city departments. So it's just like the common projects in the city. They will have all the departments to review it, send the comments to them, and making sure they are compliant with the city code.
Thank you.
Who wants to talk about the traffic study? Great. I know that you did one. I'm not either, so that's okay. Do you have any comments on what the expectation is in terms of, if any, additional stress on the traffic side?
We hired a traffic engineer, Passaro Associates. Their documentation was submitted with our original application. They came out, they did a study, they examined how things work today, how much traffic was generated today from the parking lots. Then, and they looked at that at peak hour. Then they did what you normally would do with an analysis, went to the Institute of Traffic Engineers, what do you expect to be generated from a full-service hotel, which is what we're gonna have, which doesn't typically operate at peak hour. You know, their peak hours will be different. And what she concluded was that there would be no more than 66-vehicle trips during the peak, either peak hour, morning or afternoon, and that applying general traffic analysis criteria, which is what the state and the city and the county all use, since there would be less than 100-vehicle trips generated at the nearest intersection, that you, there won't be, it's just industry standard. That's not a significant impact. You don't need to go into any more detailed analysis, which she referred to as a traffic impact study.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of either these applications?
Just as to the seeker. I wanted to point out that this action that you're taking tonight, the vote you're taking tonight is for seeker only. And so, as you well know, but I want to make sure it's on the record, that the vote is, does not connote approval of the substantive applications in any way. So people also can comment on the substantive application, but I presume you'll leave the hearing open so that further comments can be made at the time that the council takes up the substantive applications.
Yes. Agreed. Sir, you wish to speak?
Good evening. My name is Troy Loffner. I'm the Director of the Onondaga County Planning Department, 335 Montgomery Street. You know, I felt the need to come today in part because I read the same article everybody else did in Syracuse.com, and I think it needs a little bit of context.
Thank you.
Because, you know, this came before the planning board, which I'm a staff member, and you know, it's, we provide comment. We provide comment on every single referral that comes before us. And oftentimes, not to downplay the comments, but there's certainly a context to those comments that if the reporter writing it didn't understand our process, he wouldn't necessarily understand the context in which we make those comments. And those comments, in some cases, are almost boilerplate comments. We ask, we tell every, almost every single referral that comes before us that they have to go to WAP and do sewer flow and capacity assurances to make sure that the system can handle it. We tell almost every referral that comes before us to look at transportation options, parking options, and similar matters, which are just part of the natural planning process that any project really undertakes. I mean, Syracuse University is certainly well ahead of the game in many ways in terms of providing the planning that's needed for this hotel, looking at the traffic, looking at the sewer control, looking at the sewer flow, all of that. And that's really what those comments are there for. We put them in everything, so they're a little bit of boilerplate, and I think they got taken a little bit out of context in terms of our process and how we handle it. I just wanted to clear that up to a certain extent. The other part of this, I would say, is, I mean, the planning, the county planning department, I would dare say the county executive fully supports this hotel project. It is a needed project in the city. You know, we've lost some hotel rooms over the last couple of years. This will replace some of those hotel rooms. And as the community grows, and it's growing as we continue to grow and Micron comes in, we're gonna need more and more of these hotel rooms to make up for it. And yeah, I think, you know, the county has certainly invested the time and money into putting money, investment forth into these hotels. And this is a great example of the dividends, and it's a great example of Syracuse University having the foresight to give us more hotel rooms, more hotel options. You know, 200 rooms on University Hill with dining and event space is just what we need in this county. And like I said, I came here really to clear up some of the context in which we provide those comments, as well as just to express our support for the project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there other individuals who wish to speak in favor? Please come forward.
Rex Jardine, 112 Circle Road. Thank you for the opportunity to provide input. As an architect and resident of ZIP Code 13210, more specifically, University Hill, since moving here, I'd like to provide some comments of support. The prominently-located Sheridan, from my recollection, was opened in early 1986 and is nearing 40 years old. As I knew and actually worked for the designer, investor, developer, I can guarantee it was done on a cheap and shoestring budget. I reviewed the application and find the sighting and massing of the proposed 13-story, 200-bed hotel, far more responsible use of the open land than the existing surface parking lots. A state-of-the-art hotel and meeting complex is overdue and welcome intervention. The hotel appears to be well-positioned in what will be a more walkable core area for out-of-town visitors, whether here for events, commencements, faculty job interviews, for Syracuse University, SUNY SF, or Upstate Medical University. Equally important to have a walkable place for family and visitors of patients at any one of the three fine hospitals that share our ZIP Code. I'd like to see this sort of bold investment and hope the city itself somehow finds ways to complement the investments of others with similarly bold and visionary municipal projects that actually attract long-term and invested residents. Sadly, other than some sidewalks and curbs, the only tangible city investment I've seen was now 10 years ago in a mere $689,741.43, the pitiful 3% local share of the half-renovation of my children's elementary school, the now 107-year-old wood-framed pre-K grade school at the center of ZIP Code 13210 in the shadow of three fine colleges and three fine hospitals. Maybe if the 53rd mayor had children in the schools, things would have been different. Imagine, after seeing developers and institutions commit billions, how exciting it would be to be at a planning commission meeting where some of that tax or deferred tax revenue from over 10,000 beds was being invested in a state-of-the-art elementary school proposed by this city, a school so fabulous Fayetteville would be jealous. To close, I fully support what Syracuse University has proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other individuals who wish to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come to the podium. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward. I don't see anyone else rising to speak.
One more question.
Please.
Greg, or Joe, can you just confirm for the seeker the number of parking spaces? Or somebody?
Hundred. Yeah.
Three to four floors on the garage? Did I read that right? Three stories. Thanks. I'm good? Thanks.
I'd just like to express my appreciation for the comments from the planning board and clarify the situation, because we wouldn't have had to discuss it if it hadn't been the unfortunate out-of-context article that...
So we'll leave public comment open for the reason noted earlier, and we will turn our attention to our seeker review first with the re-subdivision.
So the seeker review is actually covered both the re-subdivision and the project plan review. Yeah. So the full environmental assessment form, Part II, on the page 267, has been prefilled with suggestions from the staff. I'm going to go through the Part II of the FEAF to see if you agree with these suggestions. Additionally, here is a proposed attachment for the Part III Determination of Significance and a draft resolution provided by the staff that you could use if you decide to act on seeker tonight. Part II of the FEAF is an issue-spotting exercise where the board will discuss if there are any potential impacts that need to be analyzed in more detail in Part III of the FEAF. So the first question involves the impacts to land. Because this is a project that does involve construction and physical alteration of the land, we recommend that the board answer this question yes. Does the board agree?
Yes.
The sub-question A through G are seeking about the depths to water tables, slope of the site, exposed bedrocks, excavation and removal of natural materials, potential erosions, duration of the construction, and if the action is in a coastal erosion hazard area. Based on the information provided in Part I of the FEAF, the response letter, and the supplementary materials, the action will not involve construction on land with shallow water table, exposed or shallow bedrocks, steep slopes, or within a coastal erosion hazard area. And action will involve development of a SWIP and installation of an underground stormwater detention system to control the onsite runoffs. Therefore, I recommend you check no or small impact for the sub-question A, B, C, F, and G. Does the board agree?
Yes.
And then it comes to the sub-question D. This question indicates that the project will involve the excavation and removal of more than 1,000 tons of natural material. This sub-question triggers concern about the potential erosions, unstable land, and disposal of materials. Per the response provided by the applicant, the excavation will be accomplished by standard mechanical equipment in only one phase, will not be multi-phases, and will not involve blasting or driving piles. The applicant will use sheet piling and shoring to stabilize the site and to mitigate potential soil erosion caused by the material removal. In addition, all the excavated soils will be disposed offsite at the Hanson-Jamesville Coral Facility. Therefore, I recommend you check no or small impact for the sub-question D. Does the board agree?
Yes.
Sub-question E indicates that the project is expected to last for approximately 24 months. Excuse me. The long-term construction triggers concern on the noise and dust impact on nearby properties. Per the response letter, all contractors will be obligated to comply with the City of Syracuse Noise Ordinance to mitigate the noise impact. An applicant will apply standard dust management practices such as watering down the site, stabilize stone construction entrance and stone drivelanes around the building to mitigate dust impact. Therefore, I recommend you check no or small impact for the sub-question E. Does the board agree?
Yes.
The second question involves the impact on the geological features. There are no unique geological features within or near the project site. Therefore, we recommend the board answer this question no. Does the board agree?
Yes.
The third question involves the impact on the surface waters. There are no water bodies close to the project site, and the project will not withdraw water from nearby subsurface water bodies. Rather, the project will utilize and enhance the existing water utility connections that connect to the city water. Therefore, we recommend that the board answer no to this question. Does the board agree?
Yes.
The fourth question following, no, the fourth question involves impact on groundwater. This project will be connected to the existing city water and sewer services. Also, it is not located above any aquifers that are used for drinking water, and the usage of pesticides will follow the integrated pest management practices to minimize the reliance on the chemical pesticides and to mitigate the potential harm to the humans and the environment. Therefore, we recommend that the board answer no to this question. Does the board agree?
Yes.
The fifth question involves the impact to flooding. The project is not located on a designated floodway or 100-year or 500-year floodplain. While a SWIP contains construction of an onsite underground stormwater detention system, which also requires the compliance to an approval from the New York State DEC standards, this detention system will be provided prior to building and site permit approval. Therefore, we recommend the board answer this question no. Does the board agree?
Yes.
The sixth question involves impact on air. This project does not require federal or state air emission permits and does not include air emission sources. Therefore, we recommend that the board answer no to this question. Does the board agree?
Yes.
The seventh question involves impact on plants and animals. The property is a developed lot and has been used as surface parking lots for decades. Part FEAF Part I, the property is not situated in any habitat that contains the threatened or endangered species as listed by the New York State or the federal government based on the New York State DEC database. There are no registered national natural landmarks on the property, and action will not require conversion of more than 10 acres of the forest, grassland, or any other regionally or locally important habitat. Therefore, we recommend that the board answer this question no. Does the board agree?
Yes.
The following question involves the impact on agricultural resources. We recommend that the board answer no to this question because there are no... We recommend that the board answer no to this question because there are no agricultural resources on the project area. Does the board agree?
Yes.
The next question involves the impact to the aesthetic resources. We recommend the board answer no to this question because there is no aesthetic resources recognized on or close to the project site. Does the board agree?
Yes.
The following question involves the impact to the historic and archaeological resources. The project will not occur on any lands that have been listed or deemed eligible for the National or State Register and will not result in destruction or alteration of any historic and archaeological resources. But the project will occur substantially contiguous to one property, which is eligible for listing on the State Register of Historic Places. Therefore, we recommend that the board answer yes to this question. Does the board agree?
Yes.
Based on the information provided in the Part One FEAF and the response letter and the materials, like the supplementary materials, the action will involve constructions neither on or nearby a sensitive archaeological site nor on a archaeological site that is not included on the New York shipyard inventory. Therefore, I recommend you check no or small impact for the sub-question B and C. Does the board agree?
Yes.
The sub-question A indicates that the project will occur substantially contiguous to the Hotel Skyler located at 601-15 Cross Avenue South and Harrison Street. Per the response and the historic resources assessment prepared by the Kingan King Architect, the hotel building is designed in a way to match the heights and the characteristics of the surrounding properties. The three-story parking garage and two-story conference center section will be in a step-down design considering the story of the adjacent Hotel Skyler and the Skyler Commons. The hotel building will follow a classic-based middle-top massing, and the architectural design at street level will be consistent with the neighboring buildings. Also, besides, the assessment report by Kingan King Architect examines the historic properties in the surrounding neighborhood and points out that the surrounding neighborhood is a mix of numerous styles ranging from the new classical to the contemporary styles and does not present a coherent or integrated historic scene. It concludes that the location, materials, scale, and overall aesthetic of the hotels fits well with many of the adjacent properties. Also, in addition, by implementing the SWIP, dust and noise control practice, the sheet piling and shoring during the excavation, and the construction impact on the surrounding historic properties and district will be further mitigated. Therefore, I recommend the board answer no or small impact for the sub-question A. Does the board agree?
Yes.
The eleventh question involves the impact on open space and recreation. There are no designated open spaces or recreational resources that would be affected by this project. Therefore, we recommend that the board answer this question no. Does the board agree?
Yes.
The 12th question involves the impact to critical environmental areas. We recommend that the board answer no to this question because this project site does not contain or is adjacent to a critical environmental area. Does the board agree?
Yes.
The thirteenth question involves the impact on the transportation. The project will not result in a significant adverse impact on the existing transportation system or traffic patterns. The proposed parking garage of the hotel will contain about 100 parking spaces, representing a reduction from the existing 124 spaces currently provided by the existing surface parking lots. Per the trip generation and distribution assessment prepared by the traffic engineering, it concludes that the project will not result in significant adverse impact on the local traffic operations, and the roadway capacity of the both Harrison Street and University Avenue is sufficient to accommodate the anticipated traffic generated by the projects. The project will not degrade existing transit access and existing pedestrian or bicycle accommodations. Therefore, we recommend that this question be answered no. Does the board agree?
Yes.
The fourteenth question involves the impact on the energy. The project will cause an increase in the use of energy. Therefore, we recommend that the board answer yes to this question. Does the board agree?
Yes.
Based on the information provided in the Part One FEAF and the response letter and all these materials, the project will not require a new or an upgrade to a existing substation or create or extension of any energy transmission or supply system to serve more than 50 single or two-family residents or to serve a commercial industrial use. Therefore, we recommend the board checks no or small impact may occur for the sub-question A and B. Does the board agree?
Yes.
Sub-question C indicates that the project will utilize more than 2,500 megawatts hours per year of the electricity. Per the will-serv letter, the existing electricity infrastructure has sufficient capacity to accommodate the increased demand by the projects. In addition, the project will use LED lighting to reduce the electricity demand. Therefore, we recommend that the board check no or small impact may occur for the sub-question C. Does the board agree?
Yes.
The sub-question D indicates that the project will involve heating or cooling of more than 100,000 square feet of the building area. Per the response letter, the project will use modern energy efficiency design and equipment, including a energy recovery ventilator-type air handling units which can recover energy between the supply and exhaust air streams to the air handling unit in order to reduce the heating and cooling loads. Therefore, we recommend that the board check no or small impact may occur for the sub-question D. Does the board agree?
Yes.
The fifteenth question involves the impacts to the noise, odor, and light. We recommend that the board answer yes to this question because the project will result in an increase in noise and outdoor lighting. Does the board agree?
Yes.
Based on the information provided, the project will not involve blasting activity, will not result in routine odors for more than one hour per day, will not result in light shining onto a drawing properties or creating like sky glow brighter than existing area conditions. Therefore, we recommend that the board check no or small impact may occur for the sub-question B through E. Does the board agree?
Yes.
The sub-question A indicates that the project will produce sound above noise levels established by the local regulations. Per the response letter, all contractor will be obligated to comply with the City of Syracuse Noise Ordinance to mitigate noise impact. Therefore, we recommend the board check no or small impact may occur for the sub-question A. Does the board agree?
Yes.
The following question involves the impact on human health. The project site does not have any history of contamination or spills and is not in a environmental site remediation database. Additionally, the project will not involve construction or modification of a solid waste management facility, and the solid waste generated during the construction will be removed and disposed in compliance with all state, federal, or local laws and regulations. Thus, we recommend the board answer no to this question. Does the board agree?
Yes.
The seventeenth question involves consistency with community plans. We recommend that the board answer no to this question because the action is consistent with the development standards of the planned institutional district of the zoning code and the adopted district plan of the Syracuse University Sub District Number 12. The surrounding properties are occupied by the institutional uses, hotel, and student housings. The proposed hotel building are not in sharp contrast to surrounding land use patterns. Does the board agree?
Yes.
The last question involves the consistency with the community character. The project will not replace or eliminate existing facility structures or areas of historic importance to the community, will not create a demand for additional community services, and will not interfere with the use of enjoyment of officially recognized or designated public resources, and is designed to be consistent with the predominant architectural scale and the character of the surrounding properties. Therefore, we recommend the board answer no to this question. Does the board agree?
Yes.
So in conclusion, the Commission as lead agency in this coordinated review under the State Environmental Quality Review Act has thoroughly reviewed all the relevant materials, has taken a hard look, and analyzed all aspects of the action. For all the reasons set forth above, the Commission determines that action will not have any significant adverse impacts on the environment, and therefore, an environmental impacts statement need not be prepared. Accordingly, the Commission issues a negative declaration to be filed, and notice of the negative declaration will be provided pursuant to all applicable laws and regulations.
Thank you for taking us through that detailed review. Because we've done that step by step, we don't require a motion. So, okay, and this will apply to both the resubdivision and the associated project plan review for the hotel project that we just heard about. That concludes our action on these applications for this evening.
We normally don't take a vote once we've walked through all of the part two because they've already answered no, and we'll have a resolution prepared reflecting the board's action after this for signature by Mr. Kula.
Yeah, we prefer to hold this resub with the project plan review beyond the next meeting.
We expect to see you back next month.
And you will receive.
And you will be back.
Soon, next month. So I think that concludes the totality of our action this evening on these two projects. So we will now move to the next item, actually related items for action. The next three items are related, and the background representation, I think, will cover all three, although we will certainly act separately on the three.
So the next items on the agenda is three zoning map amendments, Z-2A94, Z-2A96, and These projects happens at 505 Prospect Avenue, 515 Prospect Avenue, and 525 Prospect Avenue. The owner of the 505 Prospect Avenue is 526 North Salina Street LLC, and the 526 North Salina Street LLC also owns the 515 Prospect Avenue. The Syracuse Flatiron LLC owns the 525 Prospect Avenue, and the City of Syracuse only administrator are the applicants for all the three zoning map amendment application. And currently, these three properties are in a pending zone district and pending for assignment of the zone district.
Sitong, just a question. The owner of the property you referred to, and we have, it's 526 North Salina LLC? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought I heard something else.
And we're designating it MX...
MX4.
Four, right. All three parcels.
All three are MX4.
Correct.
Yep. Do you have any idea how long they have owned this property? I mean, is it a recent purchase since it's considered it's not a right of way? Or, I'm just kind of curious.
The property was created since 2023, and yes, that time...
In the staff report, the property became a new tax parcel in 2023 following the adoption of rezones.
Right.
So there's a backlog of these rezones of parcels, so...
Right, I understood that part. So, but it was owned by the person even before that?
I don't know.
Okay.
So as confirmed by the zoning staff, the properties are previously owned by the city and was also sold to these currently property owners in the 2023.
Further questions on any one of these three zoning map amendments? For staff? If not, then are there individuals who wish to speak in favor of any one of these three zoning map amendments? Just provide your name, please, and address and comments.
My name is Jamie Williams. I live at 729 Sumner Avenue in the city. I'm an associate partner with Holmes King Colquhust Architects, and our office is 575 North Salina Street, across the street from the Flatiron Building. I'm speaking on behalf of the ownership of the building. On behalf of Twin Gables Holding Company, the ownership entity of 575 North Salina for over 35 years, we enthusiastically support the revitalization of 535, 536 North Salina. As the architects for that project, we were knee-deep in our clients' efforts to secure ownership of the adjacent Prospect Avenue property so that the additional property could facilitate building egress, handicapped accessibility, and zoning required parking. These efforts began with the engineering department, then on to the planning commission, and ultimately to a successful appeal to the common council. Changing the zone district of the subject property to urban core MX4 will allow both properties to match zoning classification, and will make it easier for this worthy project to proceed to completion. Thanks for your consideration, Carlton Holmes, partner, Holmes King Colquhust.
Thank you. Are there other individuals who wish to speak in favor of any one of these three applications? If not, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to any one of these three applications? Don't appear to be any additional speakers. We'll close public comment and proceed with our seeker review.
We're going to do seeker for all three. I think that's...
Do that.
I think because they're all related.
Figures and similar rationale.
Keep them separate in your head. Has everyone had a chance to review the EAF Part One prepared by the applicant and contained in your packet as to each of these parcels, each of these rezones?
Yes.
Okay. Has everyone, nice, had a chance to review the EAF Part Two prepared by staff contained in your packet as to each of these three separate applications?
Yes.
Does anyone believe the proposed actions... Does anyone believe the proposed actions in any of the three rezones will have a moderate to large impact under seeker?
No.
Having determined there will be no moderate to large impacts for the rezone of any of these three applications, I recommend that the Commission make a negative declaration as to each project number separately and prepare a Part Three EA F accordingly.
Thank you. So we'll proceed one by one now through these proposed zoning map amendments. First, taking up Z-2895. Is there a seeker motion for this?
Yes, I'm prepared to make a motion to approve Z-2895 as presented. I'm sorry, we're still on seeker. Make a motion for issuing a negative seeker declaration for Z-2895.
Thank you. Thank you. Discussion on this seeker motion. If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? The seeker motion is approved. We might as well act upon Z-2895. Is there a motion for action to the Common Council for final disposition of the zoning map amendment, Z-2895?
I make a motion for approval of Z-2895 with recommendation for affirmative action to the Common Council.
Thank you both. Discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? That is approved. We'll go on to the council. Z-2896, is there a seeker motion for this zoning map amendment?
Make a motion for, I mean, issue an affirmative recommendation, sorry, affirmative negative declaration. Of course, affirmative negative seeker declaration. Thank you. Negative seeker, yes. Too many.
Negative declaration on Z-2896.
Let's try this again.
And is there a discussion on this motion for seeker? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? The seeker motion carries. And is there now a motion for a recommendation to go to the council on this amendment, Z-2896?
Yes, I make a motion for approval of Z-2896 with an affirmative recommendation to the Common Council.
Thank you. Is there discussion on this motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? That recommendation for Z-2896 moves to the council. Looking now at Z-2897, is there a seeker motion on this amendment?
Sure, let's see if we can do it right this time. I make a motion for issuing a negative seeker declaration for Z-2897.
Discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? The seeker motion carries. Is there now a motion for action by way of a recommendation to the council for this amendment, Z-2897?
Yes, I make a motion for application Z-2897 approved with an affirmative recommendation for action by the City Council, the Common Council.
Thank you. Thank you. Discussion on this motion. If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? This recommendation will also go to the council. And I think that completes our hearings, but not quite our business this evening. We have another business item.
Yes, we have one, we have items in the outer business. The first one is the three-mile limits subdivision review. It's in the town of DeWitt, and it's for the lot line adjustment of the A12 and A20 Franklin Park Drive. The owner and applicant are the Stefan Oliver Jr., and this application has been reviewed by the City of Syracuse Department of Engineering.
Thank you. Is there, are there any questions on this item?
No questions.
If not, is there a motion for action on 3S-2505 in DeWitt?
Make a motion to approve 3S-25-05 as presented.
Thank you. Thank you both. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? That three-mile limit in DeWitt is approved. And I think our last item before adjournment is election of officers for the Planning Commission.
I move the nomination of Steve Kulik as chair and Walter Fuller as vice.
A second.
Discussion on the motion. Who's that?
She wanted to be a write-in.
It could happen.
Be careful.
Further discussion on the motion. Rush this. Okay, so if there's no, but if there's no discussion, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Any holdouts?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you.
And we'll convey this information to Walter.
In due time.
With the additional responsibilities that we added to the vice chair's position, all seven pages of those duties we will convey to him.
That's right, our new job description.
Right. And I think we're finished with our official business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. We're adjourned, and we will reconvene June...
Sixteen.
Sixteen, okay, thank you.
Well, we have our workshop, no, we have a workshop before.
June nine.
So the pregnant question is, when are we going to get the amendments? Very soon? Does that mean this week?
The vice chair, see?
I'm sensing some equivocation.